Mission meeting for January 12th will come to order, please. Roll call.
Commissioner Abraham.
Present.
Commissioner Gault.
Present.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Here.
Mayor Kayler.
Present. Tonight Commissioner Abraham will be doing our invocation and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Flynn Mudd. He's a junior at St. Mary's. So Commissioner Abraham.
Father which art in heaven, we thank you so much for today. A day filled with opportunities for us to represent your character. Father, our goal here is to uphold the rights of our citizens, to work in such a way that is respectful, compassionate, and kind. Help us to always remember that the task at hand is so much bigger than any individual. These things we ask in your shoe's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Flynn. City manager, any additions or deletions?
There are none.
Can we have a presentation tonight? The audit report, the CAFRA for 2015. And Kemper CPA Group is here as well. Thank you.
Mayor Commissioners, as you know, for the past 25 years, we've commissioned a local artist, Janice Croznow, to prepare a pen and ink for the cover of our annual audit report. And in recent years, the audit cover has included such things as a Texaco station, the Metropolitan Hotel, Whitehaven, and the Coca-Cola plant, just to name a few. This year, we selected the Paducah Police Department building for the cover. And I'd like to, at this time, present an identical, an identical print copy to our chief, Urbana Barnhill, and I assume he'll post it in his new, his new building.
Nice.
In case you all haven't seen it.
I haven't seen it.
Here we go. I'm sorry about that.
Pretty.
You can get a whole set.
Very nice.
This is the 25th one in a row. And tonight, we also have with us David Hampton with Kemper CPA Group, our financial auditor, auditors. Kemper performed our most recent financial statement audit, which was fiscal year 15. And David is here to answer any audit-related questions that you may have. David?
My name's David Hampton, as John mentioned, and I'm with Kemper CPA Group. And I'm here to present the city of Paducah's CAFRA for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2015. Before we get into any of our reports, I would like to thank the opportunity, take this opportunity to thank a few people. One, I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to serve your organization. It's always a pleasure working with you. I also want to thank the entire staff of the city. There's a lot of work that goes into preparing this CAFRA report. Takes a lot of work, not just outside of the financials side, but there's a lot of other information that's in this report. And we really appreciate all the effort that's put forward and everyone's willingness to work with us so we can complete this task in a timely manner. And of course, I've got to thank our John and Audra and all of the finance department because they take the bulk of our questions. And they're ready to get rid of us after about a week and we're there for about a month. So I do want to thank them for that. So now we're here to present your audit report for fiscal year end 2015. Your CAFRA consists of about four main sections. There's an introductory section. There's the financial section, which includes our audit report, the management discussion analysis, the basic financial statements and notes, and required and other supplementary information and schedules. The statistical section, as well as the single audit section. Now that kind of we've got an overview of your CAFRA, we'd like to present our reports. If those of you that have a CAFRA with you, our first report is on page 11. If you happen to be looking at a PDF file, it's on page 18. The second and third paragraphs discuss the responsibility of the city and our responsibility as your auditors. As noted, these financial statements are the responsibility of the city and our responsibility as your auditors to express an opinion on those financial statements. The sixth paragraph discloses our opinion and as noted, we've determined that these financial statements are fairly presented in all material respect. This is known as an unmodified or clean opinion. In addition, on the next page, on the first paragraph there, we've applied limited procedures to the required MDNA, Management Discussion Analysis, and the pension supplementary information that are required under governmental auditing standards. Accordingly, we're not expressing an opinion on those, that information in there. But in addition, we do also report a, in relation to, in the ninth paragraph, there's other supplementary information that's included on pages 99 through 121, and the schedule of federal expenditures, expenditures on pages 142 and 143. And we've determined that these statements and schedules are fairly presented in all material respect. It's also noted in the 10th paragraph, we do not audit the introductory or statistical sections. This is just additional information that's required in a CAFRA report. And accordingly, we are not expressing an opinion on those, that information. And that basically concludes our audit report on the basic financial statements. However, there are a couple of other reports that we were required under governmental auditing standards and OMBA 133 to include. Back on pages 142 and 143, which is toward the very back of the report, the last section under the single audit section, is our required report under government auditing standards. This report discloses our findings, if any, related to the city's internal controls over financial reporting, as well as compliance with certain laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements. As noted in the second paragraph, our responsibility is to consider the city's internal controls over financial reporting, but not to audit those controls. And accordingly, we're not expressing an opinion on the city's internal control. With that in mind, as noted in paragraph four, we did not identify any deficiencies as material weaknesses which we are required to report to you under governmental auditing standards. In the next paragraph after that, as part of our obtaining reasonable assurance, whether the financial statements are free of material mistakes, we did perform tests of compliance with certain laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements. And as noted, we noted no instances of non-compliance or other matters that we're required to report under government auditing standards. Our last report is on pages 146 and 147, as required under the U.S. Office of Management and Budget circular, A133 Compliance Supplement. This report will disclose any non-compliance, if any, regarding the city's compliance that could have a direct or material effect on the provisions of your major federal programs and grant agreements. As noted in the second paragraph, compliance with these requirements is the city's responsibility, our responsibility is to express an opinion on those. And in paragraph five, we have determined the city has complied in all material respects with the types of compliance that could have a direct or material effect on your major federal programs. In addition, in paragraph six, the city is responsible for effective internal controls over compliance. And as noted in the next paragraph on the next page, we noted no instances of non-compliance or other matters to be reported under OMBA 133. And this basically concludes our reports on your CAFRA. Just some overall comments, the management discussion analysis is on pages 13 through 28. This is an excellent source of information and provides some comparative information to see how the city has done from one year to the next. Overall, your net position increased 2.1 million during the year. However, you do reflect a $19 million deficit in the net position and you're unrestricted. This is due to the implementation of GASP statement number 68 regarding pension disclosures. And that new standard has required you to include in your CAFRA your proportionate share of pension obligations in the future, which the implementation of that resulted in a $39.2 million reduction to beginning net position. So I don't want you, if you're looking at that, to be shocked from one year to the next, that big change. That's the result of this new standard. And this is occurring all over the nation. Everyone's having to report this now and they're having the same effect on theirs. Your unassigned governmental fund balance, you still reflect 12.5 million available for future expenditures. Your capital assets, you have a slight decrease of 1.3 million during the year. This is back in note three. This is primarily due to depreciation was in excess of new assets added during the year. Your long-term debt actually decreased 5.3 after taking into consideration the long-term pension obligations. And your operating revenues in your general fund exceeded expenses by 2.8 million before transfers during the year. Is there any questions regarding your report on your CAFRA?
No.
Well, once again, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to serve your fine organization. And if you should have or have any questions, please feel free to contact myself, Nathan, Tara, Barry, any one of us, and we'll be happy to answer any questions. You may have something in the future. Just give our office a call and be glad to get with you if I'm available. And if not, I will definitely get back with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I'd like to compliment John, Audra, all your team, John, and the city manager for keeping us in such good financial condition. Keep us in line on our finances, always ahead of it.
This is our 25th out of the last 25 years in a row that we're applying for the national award. So hopefully we'll know in about six months.
Thank you.
I think I say this every year, but the city is not required to complete a CAFRA or a comprehensive annual financial report. We're required to have our financial statements audited. So this is an elective thing by the city to do the CAFRA and to submit it for national review. And with the CAFRA comes the introductory section, which is a derogative section that really attempts to give meaning to the city's financial operations beyond the numbers for people that aren't as comfortable with numbers. And then the statistical section, more the same kind of thing. So the preparation of a CAFRA, again, is an elective thing that is part of our commitment to provide the public more, more easily understandable information and be as transparent as we can in our financial operations. And again, to receive the award for that many years in a row is quite an achievement for the finance office.
Okay. We'll go on to our meeting. Commissioner Abraham with the minutes.
I move that the readings of the minutes for January 5th, 2016, December 15th, 2015, and December 17th, 2015, city commission meeting be waived and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second. Does everyone had a chance to look at the minutes? City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gault.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye.
Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint William Shannon as a member of the Commissioner of Waterworks. This term will expire January 6, 2020.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler in reappointing William Shannon as a member of the Commissioners of Waterworks.
Second.
City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gault.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that the following documents and bids be received and filed. Documents, Declaration of a Local State of Emergency for Flooding on December 29th, 2015. Contracts and Agreements. Agreement number one to memorandum of understanding with the Department of the Army for work provided prior to the execution of a project partnership agreement for a high river shoreline reconstruction project. Supplemental Agreement number one with Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, Department of Highways for Riverfront Redevelopment Project Phase 1B. Proposed Contract with Net Vision 360 Security Group for Surveillance Camera Systems for the Police Department. City Paducah Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for year ended June 30, 2015. Bids for Playing Department 430 Broadway Stabilization Masonry Closure Wall Contract Three. Artisan Contractors of Kentucky LLC.
Second. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gault.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson, please.
Upon the recommendation of the city manager, the Board of Commissioners of the city of Paducah ordered that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
Hello.
It's a busy list. Any questions?
No, no questions. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gault.
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance adopting a schedule for rates and charges for wastewater pursuant to KRS Chapter 76. These ordinances is summarized as follows. Upon the recommendation of the Paducah McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency, the city of Paducah hereby agrees with the McCracken County Fiscal Court to implement a new schedule of rates and charges for wastewater users, industrial users, and hauled waste users. These rates will become effective March 1st, 2016, and July 1st, 2017. These rates are set as follows. Wastewater user charge minimum bill effective March 1st, 2016, $5.15 per 1,000 gallons. Effective July 1st, 2017, $5.83 per 1,000 gallons. Industrial surcharge effective March 1st, 2016. BOD, what's, what's?
Biological oxygen demand.
Okay. Biological oxygen demand. 22 cents per pound. And TSS?
Total suspended solids. Total suspended solids.
Total suspended solids. 23 cents per pound. Effective July 1st, 2017, 23 for the BOD per pound. And TSS effective July 20, July 1st, 2017, 24 cents per pound. Hauled waste effective March 1st, 2016, $40 per thousand. I'm assuming that's pound.
Gallons.
Gallons. Effective July 1st, 2017, $44 per gallon. The GSA may adjust the above listed rates and charges listed above in accordance with CPIU.
Second. John?
How are you?
Thank you for being here and thank Basil for being here as Chair of the Board. Thank you.
Yeah. Spoke a little bit, you know, at the Power and Partnership Breakfast, and so you guys have heard a little bit of this. Of course, I've presented on this on several occasions. One thing I wanted to do before I got into this was, and I meant to mention this at the Power and Partnership Breakfast, give him a little credit. Of course, you know, we finished up our Wallace Park Sewer Separation Project, $5 million deal in the neighborhood over there by Kroger. And wanted to give some, some thanks to Rick Murphy, city engineer. We worked with Rick on the front end of the project. Of course, you know, if you went to the Power and Partnership Breakfast, you saw the big hole, you know, that I was talking about. Well, that hole's in the middle of the street. And of course, you know, who's in charge of the streets? It's Rick. And Rick worked with us on the backfill requirements, which saved us some money on the front end. Then on the back end, we went in and looked at, what we were concerned about was the final asphalt surface. And to be honest with you, I mean, the city pays more streets than any contractor in town. So we really wanted the city to kind of take that with us and us, have us reimburse them. And Rick and Brandy Topper helped us get those streets back in order. Saved us a little bit of money, which was good. But the primary goal for that was to make sure we had the best finished product for the folks out there. And I think we do because of, because of Rick, and I wanted to thank him publicly for that. Now to get into what we're here tonight, of course, like I talked about the Partnership Breakfast and how we'd mentioned before, you know, the JSA sewer system is a combination of county districts and the old city districts. And of course, those things range in dates of construction between 1897 and primarily the 1960s. And as, as I've mentioned before, you know, what you build in 1897 doesn't necessarily meet environmental standards of today. It's a very, very common issue in the sanitary sewer industry. And it's very common to have legal agreements with the state jurisdiction and the EPA for construction of projects that would help to bring those sewers in line with today's environmental standards. We have had agreements related to that since 2007. So essentially, since I've been at the agency, we've had some sort of legal agreement with Division of Water and EPA. Like I said, that's pretty common. I think Murray has one right now. I know Benton has had one before, Barlow. I'm pretty sure that when Reedland was a sewer district, they had one. And you go to Frankfurt, Owensboro, Henderson, Louisville, Cincinnati, St. Louis, all those folks have got some sort of agreement with EPA, trying to mitigate environmental impacts of sanitary sewers or combined sewers. Of course, combined sewers carry your storm and your sanitary flow in one pipe. So we've been working on this for a long time. We've been working with EPA a long time. Federal government's slow. They want you to go fast. Our board has been conscious of that. And we have tried to demonstrate challenges that Paducah has to extend timeframes for work that we have to do as long as possible. And over the course of time, of course, since 2008, we've spent about $38 million. And we've got, you know, over $100 million left to do. And that doesn't necessarily mean that that's going to be done tomorrow. That's not what I'm saying. But you come with this legal agreement and it has a fairly long timeframe that you have to complete those projects. We've got the scope of work outlined with EPA. We feel good about that. We're working on the timeframe. Timeframe's not going to be five years. It's going to be much longer than that. Could be 10. More likely be 20 to 30 years that we have the timeframe to complete those projects. So like I said, our board's known about this for a while. We've watched our pennies. We've reduced our staffing since 2005, 2006, from about 35 folks to where we are now, 28. So we've always watched, watched what we spend and how we spend it. So as we sit right now, the sewer rates in Paducah are low. We're right now, there was an engineering firm in Kentucky that used to go out and do a comprehensive water rate survey and a sewer rate survey. They did it every year. They quit doing it in 2012. And I assume they quit doing it because it was a marketing tool and they didn't get enough work. And so they, they quit doing it. But in 2012, so this was three years ago, the average sewer bill for 5,000 gallons, which is the assumed normal residential usage, was $33.68 in Kentucky. Today, 2015, our sewer bill for 5,000 gallons is $22.15. So we are sitting right now today at 67% of the state average. The rate structure that Commissioner Abraham read, 5.15, starting March 1st to 2016, would make that 5,000 gallon bill go to $25.75. So the impact to the average household in Paducah would be about $3 a month. It's not a substantial rate increase, but our board doesn't take any increase lightly. So we've, we've been very careful to watch this and try to keep this as low as possible. That, that bill would correspond to about 76% of the state average in Kentucky as it sat in 2012. Then on July 1st, 2017, the average residential bill would go up to about $29. That still would be below the $33 state average in 2012. It'd be about 85 to 87%. Finally, the minimum bill, which is where you have some of your poor folks, your senior citizens, minimum bill is 3,000 gallons per month. Right now, that sits at 13.29. That would go up about $2 to 15.45, March 1st, and then to 17.49, July 1st, 2017. Couple little notes to think about with, with us, and then I'll take whatever questions or comments you have. In June of 2008, we had around 17,800 customers. Right now, we're sitting at about 18,250. That's about a two and a half percent increase over like seven years. So we don't really see a whole lot of growth. You know, I think that corresponds with the population in McCracken County and the city being stagnant. Our sewer charges in July of 2008, FY08, were 6.8 million, 6.88 million. That dropped to 6.45 in 2009, 6.23 in 2010. And we've got it right now at 6.72 million. So actually, our, our revenue stream has decreased over the seven-year period by two and a half, about 2.4%. I'd mentioned already that we've tried to keep our personnel down to where we are. And obviously, we've been out trying to get any type of grant money that you can get. We've gotten about $10.7 million in grants since 2005. Primarily, the grants are from water wastewater bonding legislature with the state. That dried up in 2009. They're not, they're not going to have that anymore. They're not going to do any more bonding at the state level for water and wastewater projects. So JSA is not a taxing base. We, we don't get taxes from anybody. We're only funded by our user rates and fees that we charge. So I think that is the summary that I have. Be willing to answer, let me make one or two more points. The Consumer Price Index Urban Clause that's in the ordinance is a carryover from 2005. And of course, we were formed in 1999. This is, the last rate ordinance we passed was in 2005. That had rate sets listed for 2005, 2007, and 2009. And I think I've covered what I need to cover with you guys. Be happy to take any comments or questions.
Any questions for John?
I guess the EPA is less than thrilled that our rates are low in the state. I mean, that doesn't, they really could care less about that?
The EPA, their technical staff doesn't really care about rates. No, they, they have financial guidance and they say that they consider a burdensome sewer rate to be 2% of the median household income, the annual sewer bill to comprise 2% of the median household income. And of course, in Paducah, we're like 0.6, 0.7%. So we're considered to have a low sanitary sewer rate burden. Now, I think the EPA may put more emphasis on paying your sewer bill than paying your phone bill. Because if you, or your cable bill. Because I think if you got a Comcast cable bill this, this month, it was about $7 more than it was last year. At least that's what mine was. But, but you know, that's just what the EPA thinks, so. But we've been working with those guys. Of course, I've had some personal meetings with those folks to emphasize Paducah, like I said, and the challenges that we have. And it's worked. I think that's going to work in our favor. I know that we've, we've had, like I said, you don't have a quick deal with the EPA or regulators. It's a long, arduous process and we're still in that. And we've been doing that since '07.
And these are mandated changes?
Yes.
Right.
We, this is not electable stuff that we're doing. And what you do is you, and that's all part of what we've done. I mean, I've, I've had dealings with these folks and you have to negotiate the projects that you're going to do. And we had to do some convincing on them that some of the more expensive stuff wasn't what we were going to do. And I think we've achieved that. But, but you can't not do anything.
Right.
And if you, and you really, the best thing to be is not on the top of their list. And, and that's where I tried not to be. And we've worked in concert with them to do projects while we talk about other things. I mean, the Wallace Park Project and Bridge Street Project, there's, we've done a lot of things during, during, during the discussions. They're right, not electable.
John, I think you and your board, Basil, I think you all do a great job of managing John, I think you and your board, Basil, I think you all do a great job of managing the JSA Sewer Board. And you do a great job of keeping costs under control as well as expenses. So thank you for your work.
Okay.
You have a good board.
So we'll have a joint meeting with the county to vote on this.
That's right. Joint meeting scheduled for the 25th at their place at 6 o'clock. It's a... There's only very few agencies like us formed in the state, and they require joint meetings. Like at Davies County, Owensboro has the same kind of sewer function. But their city and county vote is one board. And ours is set up a little bit different. Obviously, it gives the county basically one vote and the city one vote if they both vote affirmative. So that's what we'll do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving change order number one with Darnell Steel Construction LLC for the steel reinforcing contract for 430-432 Broadway. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The mayor is hereby authorized to execute change order number one for an increase in the amount of $600 with Darnell Steel and Construction LLC to remove a portion of the wood platform that is located in the storefront of 430 Broadway that is conflicting with one of the steel braces' locations, therefore increasing the total contract price to $20,350.
Second.
I think that was all the information that was just read. I certainly will be happy to answer any questions if you have some.
No, we don't have any questions. I just, you know, this has been a long process because we've been very careful in how we've approached this project. And from a safety issue, as well as not only the safety to the public, but to the adjacent building and what could happen if we didn't do this project correctly. Could be disastrous. So I just commend you and city manager and everyone that's been involved in this. Not anything we wanted to do, but we've approached it the right way.
Long-term stabilization.
Yes. City clerk?
We don't vote on that.
We don't vote on this one. It's an introduction. There you go. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay. Excuse me. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Artisan Contractors of Kentucky LLC for Contract III Mason Reclosure Wall Associated with the Demolition of 432 Broadway, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city of Paducah accepts the bid of artisan construction contractors of Kentucky LLC in the amount of $158,725 for a Contract III Mason Reclosure Wall associated with the demolition of 432 Broadway, which will involve construction of a masonry wall on the exterior of 430 Broadway, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second.
It's the final contract as part of the stabilization of the adjacent structure.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners of the city of Paducah introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Section 106-2 and 106-213 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance clarifies the due dates and deadlines for the payment of city property taxes. This ordinance also establishes the amount of penalty and interest that will be imposed on property taxes that are not paid on or before the deadline dates. The text of that section states, "Taxes not paid on or before the payment deadline fixed by the commission shall be subject to the following penalty and interest, all of which shall be added to the tax bill and paid at the time that the taxes are paid. Number one, the penalty shall be 10% of the amount of the tax owed under the unpaid tax bill. And number two, the interest shall be 1/2% of the amount of the tax owed under the unpaid tax bill, which interest shall accrue on a monthly basis from and after the deadline date until such time that the unpaid taxes, together with the accrued penalty and interest, are fully paid."
Second.
What you read summarizes a great... But basically, it does two things. We amend Section 106-2 to include language that was formerly under Kentucky Revised Statute 92.590. Last year, the General Assembly changed that. And so we now have to put it in our law. And then the other piece, the 106-213, that basically just brings our due date section up to date.
But it has... Okay. Do we set the penalty amount, or does the state of Kentucky?
State used to be referenced by... We made a reference in our local law to their law. And so we've always followed their lead. So what we did is we replicated what we had done in the past.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a change order number one with Bluegrass Uniforms, Inc. to upgrade self-contained breathing apparatus and to authorize the finance director to issue payment for the purchase of 11 self-contained breathing apparatus units for the Paducah Fire Department. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city of Paducah hereby authorizes the mayor to execute change order number one with Bluegrass Uniforms, Inc. to accept the unit price increase of $355 for the self-contained breathing apparatus units to be used by the Paducah Fire Department, and further authorizes the finance director to issue payment in the amount of $82,555 to purchase 11 of the self-contained breathing apparatus units.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and City Manager. What you have before you is just a replacement of outdated equipment that we have. We're upgrading, I guess is the way that you could say it. We're buying 11 brand-new units and retiring 11 units from service. This is a little bit different. You're seeing a change order before you... It's got a change order in it before you ever saw this initial reading in that there were some technological advancements that we were able to take advantage of that came out that we weren't aware of when we bid the original project. So this is the entire project to purchase 11 SCBA's for use by the Fire Department with the upgrades included.
Okay. Any questions for Chief? Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the city of Paducah, Kentucky, authorizing and approving an agreement for transfer, transport, and disposal of municipal solid waste between the city of Paducah and Freedom Waste Services LLC, and authorizing the execution of the agreement. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the city of Paducah to contract with Freedom Waste Service LLC, a Kentucky limited liability company, for long-term transfer stations, services, the transport and disposal of all municipal solid waste, and a safe and accessible citizen drop-off area for the deposition of recyclable products.
Second.
City manager, you want to speak on this? It's a pretty thick document.
Yeah, I could just go ahead and read it.
I'll hold the document.
Maybe not. Last July 30, our agreement with Republic Services, Inc. for a transfer station and associated services expired. We extended that to December 31 of this year. We had been 20 years with Republic and its predecessor, and under state law, we could not extend that any longer without a competitive process. So that's why we did that. We hired a consultant to prepare an RFP after extensive discussions at the staff level about how we wanted to approach this, considering all options, including potentially even city ownership of these facilities. Looked at a lot of prototypes out there, Cape Girardeau, Missouri being one of those, and determined that the setup that we had now, which is very much a public-private partnership, was the desirable thing to stay with down the road. Obviously, we thought that there was some prospect for additional interest in this contract, given the changes in the landscape in the last 20 years since this was last competitively procured. I think there's at least one more landfill in proximity to Paducah than what there was then. So we were optimistic we would get more participation. So the RFP was circulated on September 17. We did have two respondents, the incumbent Republic Services, Inc., and also Freedom Waste out of Mayfield. Tonight, we are recommending that the city of Paducah enter into an agreement with Freedom Waste Services LLC, Kentucky Limited Liability Company, out of Mayfield, Kentucky, for 10 years for an agreement for the transfer, transport, and disposal of municipal solid waste. Couple highlights of that. This agreement, again, is for 10 years with two five-year renewal clauses. The agreement required the submission of a site plan that showed the capacity to perform the required services. And by the way, I'd like to point out the fact that this is more than simply building a transfer station that the city is looking for the private sector to provide for us. It also includes, very, very importantly, the identification of a host landfill for the garbage that eventually is going to be landfilled, which is the bulk of our garbage. That is something that the city of Paducah and McCracken County, at one point in time, there was a landfill here. There still is in the sense of needing to be monitored. But the decision was made last time around to not have a landfill locally. So we essentially became dependent on somebody else's landfill. So it was a requirement of the respondents, the RFP, to identify a landfill for the disposal of solid waste generated local, just to show how important that was, which is a very complicated thing in itself when you think about the complexity of the permitting, siting, and construction operation, post-closure operation of landfill. So what I'm really saying, I think it was a good idea for the city to get out of the landfill business at some point in time, but it made this process that much more important and complex and significant to the long term for the community to include that in it. Of course, additionally, in there is the transportation of the material from the transfer station to the landfill, which, again, we asked for the private sector to provide. So those are all included in these submissions and really come together from a cost standpoint in the form of a per-ton fee that is being charged for all of those services. And we also required that the respondents set up and operate a drop point recycling operation, and that they also show the capacity to not only conduct that, but also to transport those materials to a recycling facility. So we ask for per-ton prices for both material that is headed to a landfill and material that's headed to a recycling center. So at the end of the day, overall, the Freedom Waste proposal will cost the community approximately 20% less than the other proposal. And I might add, that's close to 20% less than what we've been paying recently. So I'm glad to say that, in all actuality, this process has actually produced a savings to the community. Don't ask me how that's going to impact our solid waste fees at the household level. Yet we haven't quite figured that out, but it certainly, over the long term, is going to have a positive impact. So other aspects of this thing that are important, the hours, I believe, will remain essentially the same, Monday through Friday, 7 to 4, Saturday, 7 to 12. Withgoing with another company, the site is going to change. It'll be located off Potter Lane. There's a process that has to be gone through by Freedom to secure that site and get certain permit approvals that are required. With respect to the recycling, again, we're requiring that drop point services be set up. We're also requiring that, and this has been submitted and reviewed, that the companies show spatially the capacity to handle a much larger volume of recyclables should the city ever go into curbside recycling. I might add also that important to the requirement for receiving and processing of recyclables is verification that that's actually happening with recyclable materials. So we wrote into this contract the obligation that records be furnished to the city evidencing that recyclables collected are actually entering a recyclable processing facility and being processed and so on and so forth. So that's an overview of the contract. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
So to be clear, Freedom is offering recycling. I mean, they're staffing the facility, and then they're taking the recyclables...
To a processing facility.
As recyclables. So the city absolutely is continuing to offer recycling program to our citizens.
Yeah, it'll be essentially the same service as we began last spring, actually with Republic at the time, set up very, very similarly as that.
So it doesn't... The recyclables do not go to the landfill. They are transported to the recycling.
No, again, we've made provision in this contract to require verification of where the recyclables are going. So that's a very important thing, obviously, especially with recycling market being what it is right now. So yes, that's in there.
I was there Monday morning with a whole bunch of recyclables.
I was just reading an email. Want to verify that we are offering the recycling program, as we were, and they're going to recycling process.
Yeah, I'm going to speak to our interim measures when I get to my report. But particularly to this contract is the requirement that a drop point service be conducted in a very similar fashion to that which has been in place at Republic. Now, we did make certain specifications for the site that are intended to make access as convenient as possible to people. Hard surface all around being one of those requirements. So we think we may even be taking it forward a little bit in terms of convenience for people to bring recyclables to that facility.
Okay. I know, you know, we did a citizen survey, and we're going to do another citizen survey. Are we going to ask the recycle question again in this next survey?
Well, there's been discussion about that. I think the point in time where we could suggest that we could offer that curbside at no additional cost, I think, has passed us. Perhaps it'll return, hopefully. But with the markets being what it is, there's definite cost associated with that is evidenced by the fact that the per-ton cost that we will pay Freedom for recyclables is $40 a ton, whereas the per-ton cost that we'll pay for solid waste or garbage is $34.95. So they're showing that the cost on the back end of that is actually greater than what it is to landfill. So we'll continue to monitor that. What I'd like to do, if the Commission wants to have a question about curbside in the upcoming citizen survey, is to somehow, and I've talked to Pam extensively and Rick about this, is somehow associate that prospectively with what a cost to the household might be for that service. So give us a little time to let the dust settle on this and make some projections on that, and then hopefully, we can include something like that in the survey.
Any Commissioners' comments tonight? Are you through? You got your report? Sorry.
Okay.
I don't know, it just felt like it already had a report.
I'll make it short. I want to mention, I said earlier that our contract with Republic expired December 31 for solid waste. That's also true of our contract with Republic for the drop point recycling services. And while in retrospect, I might have had that contract out longer in time. The fact is that it expired December 31, and we were... Found ourselves in the position of needing to determine very quickly what our best options might be for disposal of garbage and also receiving recyclables during an interim period of time should we move forward with the Freedom contract. We were in negotiations up till last week. But a couple weeks ago, when we were dealing with this issue, we were fairly early in negotiations, but it was looking like we would be coming forward with a recommendation for a contract with Freedom, which meant that access to the Republic facilities would not continue under the former contract. To make a long story short, after discussing that with Republic, we found ourselves in a situation of needing to consider what other options there might be out there. And I want to approach this from the standpoint of, yeah, we showed some resourcefulness and were somewhat... At the end of the day, the options that were chosen financially are fairly... are fairly attractive. And let me first say that what has changed all in the last 10 working days is that up until 10 days ago, the city was hauling all of its trash to a transfer station in Paducah. Beginning on the 1st of January, we have been hauling all of our trash to Mayfield in city trucks, using city labor. Up until the end of December, there was a drop-off recycling facility at the Republic Transfer Station. As of this Monday, Monday, there's a drop-off recyclables facility at the City Public Works Yard. So, all of this came about very quickly over the holidays when there were other very large issues at hand, including the prospect of high water and having to put in the flood wall gates. And I don't know in my whole career that I've witnessed an organization responding to the need to reorganize and bring about change as quickly and under such challenging conditions as what occurred here. And I want to point out that I'm talking about the solid waste department, the street department, and the engineering public works department led by Rick Murphy, Randy Topper, Chris Yarber, others played a role in bringing all of this about in such short time. But I want to point out how significant this change is, how quickly it came about, and the conditions that it was done under, as a credit, I think, to the resourcefulness or the resources that are in place, the conviction of the staff people involved to make the change happen. I want to give a shout out to the city's equipment replacement fund that has in place, or the result of that fund gave us the option to consider using our relatively modern garbage truck fleet, if you will, to, instead of going three or four miles to a transfer station, to actually take almost a 60-mile round trip daily to take material to another site for a period of time. So, again, credit to all of those people involved with that, to the city commission. We wouldn't have necessarily expected that to happen, and perhaps because we didn't anticipate it, we found ourselves scrambling like we did. But at the end of the day, it's quite a success story, I think, and I see no reason why we should encounter any major hiccups with that during the interim period between now and I meant to mention that the contract with Freedom requires that the facilities be up and running by August 1. Hopefully, it'll be sooner than that, but that's the longest period of time anticipated for that or for our interim services, if you will, to continue to operate as they have since the 1st of January. That completes my report.
Oh, thanks. And I got a nice compliment on your department once again, Rick, today. Somebody knew that had moved into town. They weren't sure who really picked up the garbage, if it was, she found out it was the city that actually picked it up, but she forgot to push her trash out, and her garbage person said, "No, I'll go get it for you." He pulled it out, emptied it, took it back for her, and she was so impressed, she said, "I just wanted to call and tell you that you need to give him a raise." So, you know, we always have compliments on our department and what a good job they do. So, I'm sure you'll let everybody know on your end.
We don't mess around with garbage and solid waste because we know that it's near and dear to people's hearts and minds in terms of the service that the city has committed to provide. So, and I might mention, by way of recollection, when we did our last community survey or city services survey three years ago now, the solid waste department was the highest-rated program that we had in the city. So, we'll see how it comes in this time, but that was interesting then and continues to be. They do a great job.
Any comments?
I've got a quick comment. We recycle, and I can tell you that within this 10-day period that Jeff was talking about, that the transfer or the drop point for recycling that we've established here in the city is better today, on Monday morning when I arrived, Monday morning early, is a better, more organized, better signage, better everything than what Republic provided for us under the past contract. I mean, it's a, I mean, there is signage, the retainers are all lined up, there's a hard surface. There are not big trucks that drive around and cover you in dust as there was at Republic, and you kind of know where to do things. And it is a testament that says, yeah, we did a good job, and we did it on a hurry-up basis, but it's not a hurry-up project because it's a first-class project. Republic obviously had no incentive to do a very good job, and they didn't do a very good job. And we did, and we did. So, thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
And I do want to say, too, that last night after the fiscal court meeting, I did send an email and text message to the members of the fiscal court thanking them for their vote on the transient room tax that will help pay the bond on the pad for the pavilion as well as for the CIP for the convention center.
That's good news.
So, I do thank them.
It was the right thing to do.
Right. Okay. We don't have an executive session tonight. Any public comments? Meeting's adjourned.